Order, Colorado Police.
Master Combs.
Here.
Master Berger.
Here.
Master Tudor.
Here.
Master Botkin.
Here.
Judge Taylor.
Here. Professor Smith. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mitch Brown. Hi buddy, how are you?
How you doing? How's everyone?
Mitch is from Pleasant Run Baptist Church. He's gonna leave us in a word of prayer.
Yeah, more of a mainstay in the county. Before I pray, let me invite each and every one to the courthouse here at Thursday, May 7th, at noon, National Day of Prayer. The Richmond Air Minister Association will be hosting this event, and certainly, we want to recognize all the elected officials that attend, so we certainly invite you to come out for that day. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your presence with us right now, and all that your presence brings us, Lord. And Lord, we pray that your favor will guide each and every one of these elected officials, Lord, and guide them in their decisions and all that they do, Lord, that they may prove themselves worthy of the trust that's been entrusted to them by the people of this county. And Lord, we thank you, Lord, that we live in a nation where we can see it's in God that we trust, and we thank you, Lord, for hearing our prayer. God bless America. We love you, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, Lieutenant Markham is gonna lay us in the pledge. If everybody please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Y'all have a chance to look over the minutes from last meeting. Need a motion in a second, please, to approve the minutes.
Don't move.
Second.
Colorado Police.
Master Combs.
Yes.
Master Berger.
Yes.
Master Tudor.
Yes.
Master Botkin.
Yes.
Judge Taylor.
Yes. Glenn.
Hello.
Treasurer's report. Good morning.
Good morning. I did not get the treasurer's report in your iPads, but I handed them out this morning. It was too late to get it to Chris and get it turned last night when I got it done. We've been working on budget over the last week, week and a half. The fund balance as of 2/28/2015 was $7,826,658.80. The total fund balance as of 3/31/2015, $7,137,744.37. At this time of year, we should be approximately 75%. Not, you know, depends on property taxes, they all come in it before Aprils, or by April, so you'll have a higher percentage on that. But our general fund revenues are at 81.5%. Our expenditures are at 54.4%. Our road revenues are at 95.2%, and our expenditures are at 76.7%. Our jail fund revenues are at 71.9%, and our expenditures are at 81.4. Now, you'll see that if we have more expenditures than we do revenues, that's why we've had to transfer more money in to cover from the general fund.
The biggest reason of that is the housing inmates and other...
The housing inmates and the medical contract has gone up, so...
When did it go up?
Back in October.
Yeah.
When we, when they went over the going to a new medical carrier.
Did we sign a new contract?
Yes.
I don't remember signing one.
It was discussed in Berea, wasn't it?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Yeah.
How much did it go up?
About $75,000, I think.
A year?
Yes.
I believe it's time to rebid.
CSEP revenues were at 33.6%, expenditures are at 39.7. The reason for the mismatch in that is because we had a million five sitting on June 30th of last year, so it makes it a little, a little miscrewed, but it's, it's fine. We're in good shape on the CSEP fund. Our 911 revenues are at 71.2%, which is a little down from the 75, and our expenditures are at 65.2. So even though their revenues are down, they've done a really good job on their expenditures, keeping those down, so they're in good shape.
Glenn, is jail the only thing that we've had to transfer funds in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We've, we made a transfer back later, earlier from LGA to road fund, but that was just because we were paying some asphalt out of the LGA. But other than that, yes, we've only had to transfer to the jail fund from general. And also, we are working on the budget. We got through all the budget meetings with department heads. I'm currently putting all that in the computer system and getting a draft copy out. I will have that draft out to you all on your Dropbox. I'll have that out to you on Friday, sometime on Friday, which is May 1st. So I just wanted to note that in the minutes that they will get it by May 1st, the proposed budget. You have any questions? And, and this is a report that's open. Anyone can have a copy of this. All you have to do is contact the finance office, I can get you a copy of the treasurer's report.
Any questions, guys? Thanks, Glenn. Guys, I need to ask, it's this time to amend the agenda for a radio through CSEP. So I need a motion in a second.
Don't move.
Second.
Colorado Police.
Master Combs.
Yes.
Master Berger.
Yes.
Master Tudor.
Yes.
Master Botkin.
Yes.
Judge Taylor.
Yes. And why don't we go ahead and do that, Carl, right now, if that's okay?
That's fine.
I think this is bid opening.
Yes, bid opening for ham radio upgrade.
Part of the new EOC project, we always stay focused on the big building itself, but because of that new big building, there's about seven other projects that are tied to it. This is one of them. Getting our ham radio upgraded for the first time ever, we'll have a dedicated ham radio room, which is the most reliable form of communications when telephones are down and, and cell phones are down, and radio systems that, like we own in other counties, have problems. Ham radio can always come through. We have a very good ham club here. They work very well with us. They respond to everything we've asked them to respond to in the past. They practice in our graded CSEP exercise, and we've always basically stuck them in what amounted to a glorified closet with three guys and radios, and they were bumping each other, that's how tight it was. So we built them a real room this time in the new EOC, so this is equipment to go into that new room. We're using some of our old equipment that's still kinda modern, but a lot of our stuff is pretty, pretty old, and we're gonna replace it.
Received one bid, is that correct?
That's correct. One bid received only. Four or five showed up at the pre-bid meeting, but only one submitted a bid. I guess there are others thought it wasn't in their, their wheelhouse, or didn't think it would make them enough money, I don't know. But we had one bid, and that's the one that I set in the box on your spot there.
And that was received at the appropriate time?
That is correct.
I've opened the, just more here in open court. It was appropriately sealed, and according to Carl, received at the appropriate time, so I will deliver that to the clerk, and then at that point in time, Carl, you can get it made the appropriate recommendations.
Yeah. The only bid we received was from AMK Services.
All right. Carl, while you're here, just go ahead and let's, go ahead and skip that. Carl?
Yes.
The CSEP siren maintenance, the ward to bid, just go ahead while you're here and go ahead and get that out of the way.
Okay. You guys got a sheet like this in your Dropbox, but it was late, and I left a new one up there this morning, just in case the Dropbox, you didn't get to see it. We had four bids. The bottom one that's in blue there, A&amp;S Services, they're the highest price bid, and we know nothing about them, and they're located in New Jersey. So anytime we have a siren repair, that'd be expensive, because they were, they gave us some rates for travel, but not everything. And it, when I read through it, it just got to be too much. I wasn't sure. You know, their bid came in at 68.6. When we looked at, over the last two years, what we've averaged in maintenance for callouts when things break, it, it averaged about $10,145.50 a year, per year, over that two-year period. So with their rates being higher hourly, we knew they wouldn't be at 10,000. We put them at 15,000. That's the number you see in the red there below the 83.6. So when we took their 68.6 and their 15,000, that's where we got the 83.6. And we did that with everybody, 'cause everyone gave you, we're gonna do these two maintenances a year, we're gonna do all the things that are on your checklist, and then anytime you call us out, it's time and material. So we looked at what the previous contracts had done, and that's how we came up to 10,145, and we added that to everyone's base bid. So your first column, you see everyone's prices they submitted to us, and then you see where we've adjusted it to add the callouts, and then we've given you their hourly rates as well, so that you could kinda have a, a big picture of what everyone submitted. I brought the bids in case you actually wanted to see the, the bid packets themselves, but RCS on the top there, you can see what their price was when we added in the service calls. They are the people we've used for the last three years. They do an excellent job, and they're very responsive, but they were the third bid. They, they weren't the low bid. The second one there, AMK Services, that is the low bid. They're not currently in the siren maintenance business. They understand radio stuff, and they take care of our 800-megahertz system, and they do a great job, and we have great technicians that are here around the clock in Madison County to take care of our radio system. So this is a little bit of a new adventure for them as far as climbing up the pole and taking care of a siren, but they have the expertise, it's just they haven't done it. And if they have done it, I couldn't find it on this scale that we are, 90 sirens, we're a pretty, pretty large system, one of the biggest around. Safer Services, the third one down there in yellow, you see their pricing? They are the people that originally sold us the sirens when we bid it out five years ago or whatever, but they didn't physically do the work. They subbed out the, you know, dig the hole, set the pole, and all that. They're, they're more engineers and design people and acoustical people. They're more than capable, but they've never done it. So again, it'd be new for them. And then like I said, A&amp;S, we just disregarded based on pricing, and they're in New Jersey, how responsive are they gonna be when we want someone here the next morning to fix a broken siren? That's not gonna happen with them, so we threw them out. They were the highest bid anyway by 30%. So if you wanna just look at pricing, it's kind of a slam dunk, it would be AMK. If you wanna talk about, you know, they're, they're new to this particular game, even though they're not new to us, we know what kinda people they are, we know the kinda work they do, we know their expertise. Same with Safer Services. RCS, we know them well, they've been doing the system, but they were quite high, you know, by comparison to the other two. So I'm really looking for your input and what you feel comfortable doing. Do you feel comfortable giving it to a company we know and trust and respect, but this is their first rodeo, as I see it? Or do you wanna spend way more money and go with someone that we've had before? I mean, it's, it's kind of a dual-edged sword there for me.
This is a two-year contract.
One year, but we, we did get them to price additional years as well, but it is a one-year contract.
And, and AMK Services is local?
Yeah, they've got an office in our JIC, 'cause they do all the programming and installs of radios for the 800-megahertz system. So they know our county, they know our people, we know them well, and, you know, we've got two technicians here all the time, and we're only paying for one. They, they ate the, the bill for the other one, they just felt they needed more help here.
If you feel comfortable with that company, Carl, I'm okay with it.
I, I feel comfortable in their abilities, I'm just a little scared and apprehensive because they've never maintained a 90-siren system. I think they can do it.
What's it mean if they don't perform?
I would say we'd have to look at getting rid of them if they don't perform. I don't expect that to be the case, but I do expect a learning curve, because it's gonna be new to them.
Well, Safety Services, it's new to them too?
It is. Safer Services, they, they know all about them, and they expect them out, and, but they've never climbed the pole and replaced an amp, or a driver, or any of that, so...
Really, it's, it is long, they're both new.
Though, yes, they are, to that part of the game.
But there's a big difference in the price.
There is quite a big difference in the price, and then if you go up to RCS, who's been doing it for three years, who won our initial bid, you know, their price jumped pretty significantly from what it used to be. They were losing money on us before, that's why it jumped. I mean, we looked at it, and...
This is in your budget, correct?
Yes, this is in my CSEP budget.
And, and there's...
There's ample money to cover this contract, yes, sir.
You say RCS was losing money?
Yeah, they weren't making any money on us by, based on the number of repairs and stuff that we had them out, 'cause once they're under contract, they don't charge you for travel, they eat that, and they're coming from Louisville, you know, two times a week or so.
The people that travel in there this time?
They, it's in there this time, baby, in the base price, there's, 'cause it's obvious. I mean, it jumped up from 37 to 48, and then when you add in the on-call stuff, it went up to 58 or 85.
Well, when you're paying by the hour, it's, it makes sense to have somebody local.
It does. RCS did a great job. We, we loved working with them, they were great to work with, they had great technicians, but when you look at the taxpayer dollars that we're spending, it's kinda hard to justify basically spending an additional nine grand, you know?
I'd move reward to contract a UK, and them being from Richmond also, and I think that's just the route we need to go. And it could be in the middle of the stream, we may have to change.
We may, or they may be the best we've ever seen. You know, we know the people.
I hope they are.
I hope they are too, 'cause then we got a great deal.
Carl, is there, on your calls, is there a response time?
Yes, based on the severity. It's next morning if it, the siren's completely not functioning because of the things that are broken, and then it gets into, you know, number of like eight hours, three days, five days, seven days, if it's still functioning that, but not at 100%.
Is there a penalty if they don't perform those functions?
There is not.
We look at another company.
Penalty's not getting renewed.
How about on those, on the calls at the service centers, do you get an opportunity to see them, and what I'm getting at is, do they maintain bench stock for those items there?
We do. We maintain bench stock, and then it's their responsibility to get the broken part to the original manufacturer, the OEM, if they can repair it. Sometimes we can tell, you know, when somebody shot one of the sirens, you weren't gonna repair that one, we just had to replace that, that part, 'cause there's no way to repair it from that gunshot it sustained. Same with lightning, sometimes it, it becomes unreparable, so, but we maintain bench stock of all of our critical parts. All spares are housed right here in Madison County. So when a technician climbs the pole, pulls off the broken part, he evaluates it, if he thinks it's repairable, it gets sent back to Wayland, who made, made the device, and then they repair it and send us back a new spare, so to speak. But we keep all of our spares, we always have enough to, to keep everything flowing. We've, we've never run out in five years since we've had this new system.
Did we have any damage when hail stormed?
Not, not that I'm aware of to sirens yet, but I mean, I know we had hail damage.
Yeah, I knew that, but I just wanted to...
Not, not, not that's showing up, 'cause our sirens diagnose themselves every 30 minutes, I'm good, and none of that has shown that we got issues, and I was afraid of solar panels. But they're, they're all charging right now, so we may find one when we do our next service, when they climb the pole and look at it, you know, and say, hey, it's got a crack in it, but we do keep two extra solar panels as well.
Okay.
And what, the contract that they signed, is that a contract that you have?
Yes.
Could there be any kinda wording in there that if they don't perform, or is there wording in our contract where they don't perform to, to how you want them to, can we...
Terminate the contract, yeah. That, that's standard language in all of ours, you know, it's based on, you get the contract as long as you perform sufficiently and we're satisfied. If we're not satisfied, we have the, typically, we write them a letter saying, you're not performing adequately, here's what's not adequate. They have 10 days to respond, saying, here's what we're gonna do to fix that, and then we measure it for 30 days, and if they don't comply after that, we typically terminate contracts.
All right.
We've never gotten to that point, everyone's, whenever we have had an issue, they've always fixed the issue, and we've been satisfied.
Okay. Guys, we got a motion on the floor. My Master, my Master Combs.
I'll second.
I have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Colorado Police.
Master Tudor.
Yes.
Master Botkin.
Yes.
Master Combs.
Yes.
Master Berger.
Yes.
Judge Taylor.
Yes. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. At this time, gonna invite Brett Blair to come up. He's with our State Transportation Cabinet, District 7.
Did you get my email with the, does everybody have the, do you want the information page that I handed out?
We gave it.
I've got an information page which has contact information with the district.
Thanks, I'll take another one.
Yeah.
It basically tells about the rural secondary program, and has contact information if you wanna reach anybody in the district office.
Did you answer?
Do I, do I answer? I, I have answered you a couple times, so...
Thanks.
Okay, so now you have two pieces of paper. One is this information page I just handed out, the other is the data sheet from Madison County, which has road routes and money figures, and a map on the back. And what has happened is, since we met back in March, the gas tax final figures came through, and there was a, an additional 17% reduction, and so we had all the engineers recalculate their recommendations based upon the cuts, since we knew exactly what it was gonna be. Our other option would have been to have taken the original document, and Frankfurt would have made the cuts, and so we didn't want the, we would rather have more control over the selection of the routes than letting Frankfurt just draw a line and say, we'll do that far, so, so Robbie Johnson took a look at what he had originally recommended, and his new recommendation based upon the new amount of money, which you'll see up there at the fiscal year 2016, is you now have $485,000 of money that has to go on the state roads, and $213,000 of flex fund money, which you can flex its usage back to county roads, or you can put it on a state road. The, down below, you'll see there's an orange diamond, which are the fiscal year 16 recommendations for how we wanna spend the $485,000. We'd like to resurface 1.4 miles of Kentucky 374, Charlie Norris Road, and then 2.3 miles of Kentucky 3376, O.S., Old U.S. 25 North, and then a mile of Kentucky 876, Barnes Mill Road. Additionally, we've provided a green diamond recommendation, which is the state route, should you select or opt to put your flex funds onto a state route, and that would be Kentucky 977, College Hill Road, two and a half miles of it. If you look on the back on the map, then you'll see circled in orange, the orange diamond recommendations, except over on the left hand, middle left-hand side, you'll see fiscal year 16 Flex, Kentucky 876. That was originally a flex fund recommendation in March that Robbie Johnson changed to an actual use of the state money, that one mile on Kentucky 876. I failed to change that to orange when I was, I updated the size of the circle, but forgot to change the color to orange. And then up at the top right is the new flex fund recommendation of Kentucky 977. So two decisions I'd like from the court today is, one, your acceptance of our orange diamond recommendation, how we're gonna spend the $485,000, and then a decision, yes or no, on whether you want to put the flex fund money, the $213,000, back onto the state road. If you vote yes, you're saying, we'd like to put it on the state road. If you vote no, you're saying, you're gonna keep the money and use it for your county roads. My quick sales pitch is if you put it on a state road, it's typically a road that gets more traffic, so it's better bang for the buck. It lowers your resurfacing cycle for all the rural secondary roads in the county, but it's also money that's available for the county, which is hard to come by, and the flex fund program is a Governor Beshear initiative that might not exist when a new governor comes into office. So it's, I can see it both ways, I'm not gonna twist your arm, I'll let you all make the decision.
A question I have is on the, this Kentucky 977, is that not the supplemental section of, of College Hill Road?
That is the supplemental section that we have, we have changed the functional classification to rural secondary, and so even though it appears as purple on the map, then I haven't updated, the, the maps haven't been updated to show that it's now a yellow rural secondary.
So College Hill basically is RS all the way down to the river?
Correct.
So the same way, that it could be that same way out at 595, Pooty Ridge?
We, we could, but Robbie told me that he had talked to you, and you were really hoping for the low volume money...
Supplemental money, uh-huh.
To, to be used on that.
Right.
So we chose to not change it at this time.
At this time, yes.
We can change it next year, though, if, if it doesn't come through, like, if you don't get what you were hoping for, the next year, when we have the judges' meetings in our office, we can make that decision, and then by the time we...
If I don't get the supplemental money this year, surely I would get it in next year.
Well...
I'd end it with the tax.
I, I can't...
Be there.
I, I can't, I can't address that, it's...
I mean, we got beat out last year by Scott County, this month.
What happens is, every year, there's, they, everything gets reevaluated across the district. So it's possible that, while you may be a contender this year, that because of weather conditions, by the time they rate them next year, another road is actually in worse shape than any of your roads. So even though it looks like you should be the next in line, because we reevaluate annually, then you could once again be second, third, fourth place, you know, waiting your turn.
So supplemental, so I might not ever get supplemental money, never?
Right, and that's the reason that we have the option to change supplemental roads to RS, use RS to resurface, and then move them back into the system as the supplemental roads. So it's a, it's, it's an additional mechanism to ensure that all of your roads get resurfaced.
Right.
We have the same problem in every county in our district, that supplemental roads are not getting resurfaced because it, it falls in the same pot of money as primary and secondary roads.
And, and tell the court how much that is divided between 12 counties?
How much?
Supplemental money, how much supplemental funds there are that basically are divided between 12 counties?
I, I don't know that number. I, I mean, if you've been told that number, then, uh, let's see.
I was told it was 150,000.
Okay.
Is what was...
Is all that's available for that, the low volume?
Yeah, supplemental.
Supplemental, okay.
Between 12 counties?
Between 12 counties.
Okay, so, so it's, it's not a lot.
'Cause District 7, you know, it, it's over 12 counties.
Brett, I got a question on Kentucky 977.
Sir.
I understand there's some slippage down there on the side of the road. If we opt to blacktop that, the 213,000, that fund won't count for repairing the slippage before we start on that resurfacing, will it?
No, the, what we're talking about here is, is simply resurfacing.
Okay.
If there is, if, if there's other work that needs to be done...
That'll have to be done prior to resurfacing?
Right, and we have, that's part of the, the maintenance fund that is for your county, so because you all have that contract of dealing with RS and supplemental, then you all will have to sit down with Robbie Johnson and his crews, and come up with an equitable solution as to how you're gonna do that. There, there is the possibility that we might be able to find some additional funding to help with that prior to the resurfacing, but that's, that's what we're...
With the boat ramp down there, that's a heavily traveled road in the summertime.
Right, we've actually had several calls on this road.
Yes.
And that's part of the reason why we made the decision to move it to RS, so that we'd have an opportunity to address it. But we also put it down as a flex fund option, so you all would have to elect to, to do that. There's a good chance that next year, if you choose to keep this as county money, then next year, this could move up into an orange diamond recommendation that would, would handle it then, and, but of course, that means waiting another year to take care of
Sounds like, guys, we need two different motions.
Well, if we, if you keep it as flex fund, then you can split it. Is that not correct? You can portion it, have you need. If you don't get the money that you need down on the, the bottom end of 595 through supplemental, then you can use part of your flex fund to split. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I'm not... I'm for... I mean, I know how I'm voting.
What you're saying...
I think we need to keep as much as we can. I mean, we don't need to...
You're saying if you don't get 595 resurfaced, could you put the flex funds there? We could do that. We would need to come back to fiscal court with that as your flex fund option, and I'd have to go ahead and go back and get 595 changed to an RS road. Right now, it is a supplemental awaiting the decision if it's gonna get the low-volume money. Once we change it to an RS, though, then it would be knocked off the list for low-volume consideration, and then we would only have the RS as the way to handle it, and so...
When do they make the decision on supplemental?
I would say once the new fiscal year starts in July 1st, then that's when they'll start, I guess, assigning the contracts until the money runs out, and...
And we vote yes, this goes in effect today?
Yes. What you... Yeah, I'll take whatever you vote on today. If we vote on it today, then I'll take a signed document with the... The judge will sign it. I'll take it back and submit it to Frankfurt, and they'll go ahead and start processing it. So, that's the reason that if you... But of course, it also means that you're gonna have to elect to put your flex funds back on a state road, which means you won't have extra money for the county. And I know that just sounded like I just tried to sway you to keep it for the county, but that's...
You're just explaining the option.
I do want you to... I do want you to understand that if you make that decision, you are losing access to this money for your county road fund.
Yeah, I think our, you know, our county road aid money that we're getting this year, I think it's 300 less, 300,000 less, just for our county roads. You know? And that's one thing that Robbie has discussed in our meetings, is that, you know, our RS roads are in pretty good shape. I mean, you know, especially compared to other counties, you know?
I don't have...
And I feel like a lot of our county roads are what's in bad shape.
It's a hard call. I mean, I was down College Hill Road the other day, and there's some awful wavy places down there. We could probably get by another year, but I'd hate to see.
But is that on that supplemental?
It is, Brett.
Section?
It's on a flex.
Yeah, right. It's... That road has been changed to RS, so...
But it's just this last little purple section here?
From Black Road to the end.
Correct.
Is that where you were at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it looks like we... Looks like Robbie selected about a quarter mile north of Black Road, so I don't... I guess it was because of the amount of money that was available. He was trying to get from the boat ramp as far back as possible, so we were running out of money. And that amount of money for that distance, then he might have had some of the improvements already built into it, yeah.
Now, if we decide that we want to use... Or that we want to keep the flex funds, but there's a, let's say, a 200-foot section of the Kentucky 977 there, that we want to take the portion of those flex funds and just sort of fix that section?
Yes, we can do that.
Can we do that?
Yes.
And we can do that even after we decided we're gonna keep this flex funds. We just have to let you all know?
Right. Before... You would need to let me know before you go ahead and submit your county list, or you would have to intentionally submit a short list of county roads that... And make it obvious that some money's being left over because you are thinking about putting it back on a state road. Was crystal clear, Asmaud?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep.
Well, it's very clear to me. I think we need to keep the money for county roads, split it up four districts, the way we've always done it. That's about $54,000. Well, John, you say 977, you'd have $54,000. You could spend wherever you want to. But once you give that money away, you're not gonna get it back, and we're gonna be 300,000 sure this coming year, and ours 213,000 up right there. I mean, and when you say RS, they're gonna take care of RS roads anyway.
That is true. One caveat on how you use the money on the county roads is it's for asphalt resurfacing only. So, you can't use it for pothole patching. It has to be full width strip patching. So, you can do little short segments if you want.
But it can be lane patching, though, or is it the full section?
It has to be the full section.
Of the road?
Full width of the road.
But that's... You can go so many feet, stop.
Correct.
I mean, you know, you all did it.
Exactly, yeah.
But I'm just saying, what if one lane is bad and the other side's not?
They want both sides.
They want both.
You'll go so many feet, stop, and then go on down so many feet, same way the state does it.
Exactly.
A lot of times, they can do that and not have to be.
True. You can't put it on a gravel road, so I need to say that because Madison County...
I don't have no gravel roads money.
Madison County actually submitted a gravel road a few years ago, so we won't resurface... We won't put a surface on a gravel road using this money.
So, we need two different motions?
Well, I'll make the motion, we accept the recommendation not including flex funds. I think the courts... I think the court agrees with what they've put to us. I know we've had plenty of time to look over it, but that would be my recommendation.
And that's to keep the flex funds to use on the county roads?
Well, we'll vote on flex funds in a second. This is basically for the orange?
The orange diamond, those three roads, those three segments of roads.
Norris Old 25, Barnes Mill.
Yes, I did say.
Any more discussion? Call the roll, please. Master... Excuse me. Master Buckin?
Yes.
Master Combs?
Yes.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes.
Now, I'll make a motion, move that we use the $213,132...
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one dollars, I'm sorry, as flex funds for the county.
Second. Any discussion?
Just hope we get College Hill Road repaired next year, then.
Well, no, you would still have...
You can get the first parts fixed this year.
$54,000 that, you know, if we split it up, which we normally do, you'd still have $54,000.
I don't have a road on this list.
Well, you need $54,000.
I might do it, but he may need it there. That's what I'm saying. There's some years you don't get a road on your list. I've done it before. But somewhere in the county, it needs fixed. Doesn't have to be in your district every time, but I'd like to get my apartment. Maybe next year, I can get a little more than... If I get it all, it'll be more than I got this year.
Call the roll, please. Master Combs?
Yes.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes.
Brett, thanks.
All right. Thanks, Brett.
What I'd like you to do is sign this piece of paper, check no, which means you're keeping the money for the county. Should you elect to put it on 977, then contact me.
Okay.
I'm right there.
Okay, so that would just be sections, then, Brett?
Yeah. Number one.
I might call you and we get... Go down and look at it and see.
What we would wanna do is we're gonna get Robbie Johnson in to sit down and kinda talk about...
He no button there. Hasn't touched it.
Oh, well, that's all right.
I think that'd be the best thing, just to meet on the road and...
Try to scroll it up and down from the back, please. See, I did the same thing. I might have moved my desk.
I have JRM with me. He's the new planning assistant at Department of Highwayways.
Okay.
District 7.
Glad to meet you, sir.
So, he'll... He's actually... He's my boss, and anything that has to do with planning, have money, things like that, then you'll be contacting him. His name is on the front there, where it says, "Planning" on the front of that.
Okay.
Thank you, Brett.
Brett, appreciate it, man.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. And they're making me a copy of what I signed. Just pass that down, leave it on the... In there for Brett.
Sign.
Yes, I've signed it, and I've got a copy, so it should be good.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Judge, great being here.
Yeah, thank you.
New guys, ask me easy questions. Somebody said we need to be in the board here in about an hour, so we're gonna take a minute.
I appreciate you coming in.
I don't blame you. It's nice to be out here to get there, so thanks for being here.
Always drop off what you got here first.
Hope they got good roads.
At this time, I would like to invite Elliot Turner up with the Northern Madison County Sanitation District.
Jim's gonna do it.
Oh, Jim's gonna do it. All right. Well, I was gonna invite... I was gonna invite him, too, but this is Jim Rowe. He's the chairman of our sanitation board, and Elliot pretty much runs the show.
I don't know how I get stuck with this, but I'll do a little bit of the talk.
He's a better speaker, huh?
I don't know about that. Okay. Thanks for allowing us to come, and we'll share a little bit about the district, and I'm not sure what you wanted to know, but the district was formed, I guess, a little over 20 years ago, and it touches, I guess, a little bit about all of your area. We have about 1,900 customers. The average bill is about $53.95. On an average month, the customer uses about 3,400 gallons a month. On an average month, we... On an average day, rather, we treat about 350,000 gallons. Last month, we had our audit, and our audit says that the district is worth $19,002,500. Nineteen million, nine hundred twenty-five, and nineteen million, rather, nine hundred twenty-five, and a little over 925,000. And a little statistics for us, we have 132,000 of gravity line, 172,000 feet of force main, 564 manholes, 22... I mean, 20 duplex pump stations and three treatment facilities. Our liabilities are $7,223,000 of liabilities. The district areas of customers, I thought this is pretty good statistics for you. We have executive... From Executive Park South, then to Twin Lakes subdivision, up to 421, the split on Urban Road, from the Stubborn Lane to the Madison County Firegrounds, north end from Madison Village subdivision to the Boone Trace subdivision. We're completing a new treatment plant on Urban Road that'll be designed to do 200,000 gallons per day. Initially, it'll do 40,000 gallons when it first is completed, and we should have that completed in about October, November of this year. And that may try... We're doing some of the work with our own employees. The date may change. The lines may be completed probably in the next month or two. The district was approved for 1.2 million low-interest loan, 300... We contributed 300,000 from our own general fund, and what it did, it took the Greens Crossing, Robbinsville, and Stony off from what we were sending to Richmond, and we didn't... And then we'll have to... We're able to treat that ourselves. Yeah, I want to see if you have any questions.
Up and running the new plant, how many customers can it handle, Jim?
I'm sorry?
The Urban Road plant, up and fully running, how many customers do you participate having on that?
Initially, we're gonna have about 300 customers, and then for future growth, we can see at least 500 more.
So, a total of 800?
Yeah.
Will that connect to the Waco area out there and bring everybody back in on that?
It will, if the residents out there want it. Our initial plan is to just take the customers we have and pump them to the new facility.
It can... We could all... If we want to, if they wanted to go, we could also go all the way up to the school.
Do you have an estimate on what the hookups for the new existing customer would be?
Well, it would be the same as any other customer. We have a TAP fee and a development fee.
But you're gonna have to have so many customers before you can extend your services out?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
If not, is there a statute there that if you're within 500 feet of the...
Yeah.
You're mandated to tap on?
If they're within 500 feet. That's already in the ordinance, county ordinance.
Right.
That's the county ordinance, that's not ours.
But it actually comes through the EPA. Yeah, county'd have to adopt it, so...
And what is that fee?
For a house, for a residential house, it's $1,200 per resident, and then 750 per acre development fee. Right now, the Greens Crossing area, where we're having to pump it to Richmond, the actual TAP fee for a house up there is we're having to pay Richmond's fee of $1,100, plus the district is accepting half of their fees, so it will actually cut the fees for the people out in that area.
See, the other thing, too, with that, Tom, is that I think the septic tanks, you know, because all those people that have... They're on septic, so their septic tanks would have to be taken out.
Right.
You can't leave your tank in the ground once you tap on the sewer. Your bleeder field can stay, but your actual tank has got to be...
We're getting a lot of calls out there from their area right now, actually wanting to know when it's gonna be completed, wanting to hook on to our plant that's being built out there.
But it is mandatory if you're within 500 feet.
Right.
Even though your system's working properly.
Unfortunately, yeah, that's how it is.
It's good and bad, both ways.
Right.
But I mean, to... For some example, you know, to run a gravity sewer, you're looking at $60 a foot, so your infrastructure cost is expensive. If you run and people don't connect, you can't pay for it. You just can't run sewer. So, there's gotta be mechanism in place to make sure that you can pay to put sewer out there. If you've got one person that's contaminating the stream, you know, you've gotta fix it.
I mean, you just think you go Waco Loop, you know? And you go to the school, then everyone of those residents on both sides of the road, whether they wanted to or not, they would have to tap on.
What would be the minimum number, Elliot, you'd need to extend your service? So, you had... Want to go up to the school or whatever, would you need 20 customers, 30, 50 customers? How many?
Well, we would have to look at what it costs to run it up here, so we'd have an estimate, engineering estimate done, and if it's gonna cost $300,000, we'd look at what that loan cost to do 300,000, so our income would have to pay for that.
They've... The school has sort of indicated they want it. We're gonna have to look at what it's gonna cost to take it up to the school. They've indicated that they wanted it up there.
I've had some customers in that area wanting to tap on also, so, you know, it may not be too big a deal to get enough people to sign up for.
We've had several calls from them.
And the school's a heavy water user, so, you know, their rate would be a little higher. Not the rate would be, but their consumption helps out to go up to pick us school up.
How many floors y'all got now?
We only have three right now. We actually would like to have two more, it's just the feasibility of paying for them right now.
That fee's $3.
Martha, how's that compared to other entities?
We had an interesting thing happen. I don't like the electric just take... We had something interesting happen just within the last month. I guess last month, wasn't it, Elliot?
Yeah. It's really because we have a maximum amount for residential rates, but where we have a maximum amount, we had a customer move out of Lexington that actually moved on the north end. This is the first that I've ever had somebody tell us this, but we were actually cheaper than Lexington, but it's... They're a big family, and they use a lot of water. How do we compare to the Bluegrass region? We're the highest.
We are high, but we cap it. We cap our rates.
Now, there's some that are catching up with us. Brea, I don't think Brea will, but I don't know how they're so cheap.
We live different than Brea. Let me ask you this. Do you anticipate that to ever come down, once the loans are paid?
I don't, no.
But it's interesting. If you'll notice, Lexington is spending, you know, six or eight hundred million dollars in their infrastructure. You think how large Lexington is. Their rates have all historically been low. That's not gonna stay low because of the amount of money that Lexington is spending on their infrastructure. Their rates is gonna go up. Those people in Lexington are crying right now because of what their rates are gonna do.
I'd like to explain... I'd like to explain why our rates probably wouldn't go down after we've paid the loan off. What you're paying for with the loan right now is your infrastructure that you're using today. 20 years, you've paid that off. 20, 20 more years, you're probably gonna rebuild it, so you better be putting money back to rebuild that, or else you're just gonna have to borrow a lot more money then.
Yeah.
So you have to, you have to plan to keep your infrastructure going.
I guess you'd call that a sewer day rainy fun, wouldn't you?
Yeah. Well, for example, right now, you know, we have, we've got, one of our vehicles, we just purchased one vehicle. Another, one of our other vehicles has 200 and something thousand miles on it. We have to put 200 and something thousand miles on it. We have to put money back to buy vehicles. As soon as Elliot leaves here, he's gotta take three pumps to Lexington. Those are probably 14 or 15,000 dollars to have those repaired, to get those repaired. So that's what costs to run a sewer system. We've got three pumps to be repaired.
You had a good weekend.
So that's, we were saying, man, they're talking just before the meeting started, those to get some of our pumps repaired.
Just because I'm curious, and I don't know all the ins and outs on the system, what determines whether you, or what drives whether you extend services to a point? And what really bothers me about the whole thing is if I put in a new septic tank last year and then, and it just happens to be my year to have to hook on, I probably am not gonna be happy about that.
We've had that happen. Roger, can you tell me if we've had that happen? Roger?
I've dealt with it in my district.
We have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We have public meetings. Before we run sewer, this plant that we're building on Urban Road, we've been working with this since 2011. It's not something that you do in a year. So we would, we would have a public announcements that, you know, we're gonna talk about sewer in this area. So, you know, the homeowners should know about it.
Are you getting a pretty good turnout for those meetings?
No, we had, we had one at the, they're on South Kingland, and the lady from Frankfurt was the only lady that showed up.
But, you know, our meetings are the first of the month, the first Tuesday of each month. You're welcome to come.
Give us the address out there, Mr. Rowe?
It's 201 Aqueduct Drive, and it's number nine.
Okay, that's out there past Whitehall School.
Go in the back way, you know, the little circle in the back.
Yeah.
Instead of going to the Whitehall, you turn left into their parking lot.
It's eight o'clock, first Tuesday of each month. Any of you are welcome to come. You have any questions? Any other questions? Elliot's gotta run to Lexington.
Thank you.
I've got another meeting.
Hey, thank you all for being here. Appreciate your update, okay? Guys, at this time, we need to have a motion to go into executive session for pending litigation.
Second.
Call it all, please.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Master Bachan?
Yes.
Master Coles?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes. Yeah, where'd you go? Alright, thank you all for sticking around. It's a long executive session. Just to make note in the minutes, Larry made the motion to come out of executive session, and Tom seconded it. We were all in favor. No action was taken at that time. So Judge's report is next. Just wanted to tell everybody on camera and whoever's listening on our website or radio, we are in the budget process. It's been an exciting last couple of weeks. We have really engaged all of our department heads of helping us create this budget. And I'm very excited about the outcome. We'll have a little bit of tweaking to do to it after Glenn gets it all in and gets it shared with you magistrates. But we're very excited about the process, and I appreciate all the department heads and their input to our budget so far. I would like to introduce Shannon Gordon. Shannon, if you won't stand up. Guys, this is our HR Director. He started last Monday, it was his first day, and very excited about what he's doing. He's gonna be a great asset to all of us, you know, in the county administration. So, thanks, Shannon. Appreciate you being here. We did receive emergency funding for Kane Springs Bridge, just wanted everybody to know that. Got an email last Wednesday afternoon from Rick Long, Transportation Cabinet, that we got it. The joint government meeting is April the 30th at 12:00. So Brea, City, and Massacre County Governments will have the meeting this Thursday at the Extension Office at 12:00. I want to thank all the interns, any of the employees, any department heads, any magistrates, if y'all do see any of our interns over probably this week, this will be their last week with us. They start finals and stuff, I think, next week, and so this is our last week for that, and it's been great. They've helped us out a lot. And I think it's a, it's a great partnership to have that. So just thank them. And then also mention the summer interns. We will be posting applications and stuff for our summer interns, so. Blood drive, remember on May the 11th, Monday, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Madison County Government, employees, family, it doesn't matter, are going and competing against the Richmond City Government in a blood drive. The location will be at First Christian Church Fellowship Hall. It's at the rear of the building. And then just a couple of statistics, only 5% of the eligible population donate blood, and 97% will need blood in their lifetime. Central Kentucky Blood Center will furnish t-shirts and snacks for all people that come, and then also door prizes will be given away every hour. So if anybody has any questions, on the Massacre County side, Kelly McBride with CSEP and Francette are sort of heading this up. So if you could tell sheriffs, deputies, Kenny, if you could talk to your, all your staff, of course, all of our staff will let them know. And we'll also let Doug and the jailers and stuff know as well. So it'll be a fun event. And again, it's May the 11th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Still again, Massacre County Fiscal Court is on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Please follow us. And then a reminder of the Whitehall Park closure, it's March 1st through October 31st, and I'll continue to announce that. Joint Government Meeting, alright. At this time, comments from department heads. I'm gonna invite Philip Seifert up. Philip's gonna give us his discussion on historic parks and properties.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Three of our four parks are up and running for the season, and just like Judge Taylor said, Whitehall Park's closed for the fall, for the mandated pipeline upgrades. There's nothing we can do about that, that's just kind of the way it is. Kirksville, Union City, and Battlefield Parks are open, and the pavilions are ready for reservations. In 2014, Whitehall Park was used more than the other parks on a daily basis, with its shelter being reserved about 10 times a month during the season. And these are mostly on Saturdays and Sundays. Of course, with Whitehall Park's temporary closures is an inconvenience, but most of the people who have called to reserve the pavilion have been understanding, that's just how they understand it. Union City Park is reserved about seven days a month, again, mostly on weekends. Kirksville Park's Pavilion is reserved through the Kirksville Community Center. And Richmond Battlefield Park has the most visitors during the course of the year, but with more special large events being held there, including the radical reenactment and the Indian Pow Wow in late September. The Battle of Richmond Visitor Center survived the winter barely, and has had a good 2014. We welcome nearly 3,500 guests, not including special events such as reenactment, that's just people coming to the center. And we're representing 45 of 51 states, including Washington DC and 15 foreign countries. And at the pace we're going this year, we'll surpass 2014. Our summer schedule is when we are open, is 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturdays, and 2:00 until 4:00 p.m. on Sundays. And special arrangements for larger groups can be made by calling 624-0013. As you know, Historic Properties hosted the second Lincoln inauguration in early March, and it was only one of two commemorations nationwide that I know of, of his most famous speech. The other was in Washington DC a few days later. Those who missed the service are able to watch it on Madison County's website under archived videos, courtesy of Madison County's IT Department. In late March, we began our Tattered Flag Campaign, where the residents of Richmond, Brea, and Madison County can drop off their Warrant American flags for proper disposal. Those interested may drop them off at the Battle of Richmond Visitor Center at 101 Battlefield Memorial Highway between Richmond and Brea, and this project will go through Memorial Day. The Battle of Richmond Association has begun a fundraising drive to purchase a reproduction Civil War cannon to be placed on the grounds of the Battle of Richmond Visitor Center. We are hoping to raise $20,000 for the cannons and its related equipment, and as of yesterday, since February the 1st, and as of yesterday, we were just over $8,000. That's pretty good in three months without a lot of publicity. We were part of the Mountain Mushroom Festival this past weekend in Estill County, and we have the following happenings coming up. Richmond Battlefield Park will be hosting Civil War Living History Days in cooperation with the Battle of Richmond Association on Thursday, April the 30th, and Friday, May the 1st, at Richmond Battlefield Park. This is the 12th year of this educational event, and we are expecting over 800 students from several counties. We will be unveiling and dedicating Madison County's newest Kentucky Historical Marker on Saturday, May the 30th, at the Battle of Richmond Visitor Center. This marker was funded through a grant to the Kentucky Historical Society and features the role of the Old State Road, which is now US 25 and 421, and how it played in the Battle of Richmond. We have partnered with Camp Dick Robinson in Garrett County and Camp Nelson in Jessup County to unveil and dedicate these three new markers on the same day. We'll start here at 10:00 a.m. on May the 30th, then we'll go to Camp Dick Robinson at 11:45, and then on Camp Nelson at 12:45. We have negotiated with Wilson's Creek National Battlefield in Missouri to bring some personal effects of probably the most best-known Civil War general at the Battle of Richmond, Confederate General Patrick Claiborne, some of his special, his personal effects, for an exclusive one-day exhibit on Saturday, July the 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Battle of Richmond Visitor Center. It's the first time these pieces have been back to Richmond since 1862, and more details will follow on that. We will also be dedicating in cooperation with the Battle of Richmond Association, the Madison County Civil War Roundtable, and the Madison County Library's Richmond location, a new Battle of Richmond interpretive marker in early August at the library's location right up here on West Main Street in Richmond. And we will be unveiling a new historic Madison County interpretive sign on the second street side of the courthouse in early September, marking Madison County's involvement in World War II on the 70th anniversary of that conflict's end. And in cooperation with Richmond Tourism and County's IT and GIS Department, we are developing a historic downtown Richmond walking tour featuring the many interpretive signs mainly along Main Street. Our hopes are to expand this project into the county parks in years to come. We couldn't do this by ourselves. Chris Israel's IT Department has been super with us for, ever since we've gotten going, and the road department and Solid Waste have all been a cooperative effort where we can provide these services to the residents of Madison County. I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have, and if not, we'll move on to maybe more important things.
Philip, is there a fee for the parks?
No, there's no fee, right now. The main thing is, we, they're from dawn to dusk, and we ask people that they clean up after themselves. You know, use the waste receptacles, and if they have a lot of garbage, that they take it with them.
Thank you.
Most of it is birthday parties, family reunions, things like that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thanks. Appreciate it, Philip. Comments from magistrates? Tom?
I don't have much, Judge, I'd just like to say to folks that live on Sharon Court, Home Place, Possum Kingdom, Airport Road, John Ballard, I've received calls from those folks that live in those areas about potholes and this and that and the other, and I just wanted to know, and I've talked to some of them, and I've asked them to just let some of their neighbors know that we're on our way to fix potholes. I had asked the road department not to put down any more of the coal patch. Personally, it's just a waste of money to do that. When it rains, it comes right straight back up, and we're, we're getting a hot mix, I think, this week, and we'll be out to fix potholes soon. So I appreciate your patience with that, and I also appreciate your calls, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. John?
I'd just like to mention that I think Judge mentioned it there a while ago, we do have some funding for the Kane Springs Bridge, and we're in the process of getting that casted and getting it prepared. It'll be a couple of weeks on that. A couple of the bridges are still out. We're working hard to try to solve the situations in those areas, so be patient with us. Like Tom said, we're getting ready to patch some potholes, and we know we've got plenty. We've got a lot of road upkeep because we had a rough winter. So just be patient with us, and we're working hard on it. Thank you.
John? Ross?
As most of you know, we have the flower sale for the Butcher Family Cancer Fund Drive. Flower sale didn't go as good, naturally, just because of the weather. Had a good day Friday. Traffic was pretty steady, but Saturday with the drizzling rain and cold, they just couldn't go out and plant their flowers and things that they bought that day, so that kind of hurts you a little bit. I don't know the money figure, but we definitely know it'll be down from the years in the past. Doesn't make any difference, whatever we can give, it's all, every penny of it that we clear goes to the Cancer Society. Had a few ask, you know, do you think the Cancer Society is doing enough with the money improvements? Hands-on, I can't, I can't say that, but just on TV a few days ago, they have found out that the, it's not chickenpox shot, but there's a shot that you give for something else that's fighting cancer dramatically that they've just broke through with. So they're still, I'm sure they're spending the money wisely. I feel like they are. In any organization of that size, yeah, there's some waste involved there, and people's gonna pick that out, but overall, it's for a good cause. And when it's affected one family, it's just something that we can do to give back, to try to help future generations. But enough said about that. The ferry's open, been open for about three or four days now, and that's the longest we've been open in half of a month. It's just been terrible, and people complain about it being closed. We have no control over the water. It's just gotta go down before we can run it. But I want to thank Willie and the road department. What people don't realize, Willie, our road department, as well as the road departments on the other side, has to come down and scrape about at least a foot of mud off of the road before you can get to the ferry where the water's been at. And this mud's not a typical mud. I mean, it's like glue. If you walk into it, it'll pull your shoe off. And if it's just a skim of it, it's slick, it's like ice. So you can't even drive it. It's got to be washed down after it's scraped with a backhoe or whatever. So I appreciate what y'all do. I know they can't get there just when I call, but like I tell them, I thank them for getting there when they can, you know, because it's, it's a traffic area for us. Whitehall Park, I've not heard anything about progress or whatever, but I'm sure with the rain, it slowed them down compared to what they would have, how far they would have been along. Calls and emails, we've all had them. Tom mentioned it there, and John both. You're gonna get them. Most people understand, you're gonna get some that just thinks the order be out there tomorrow, and you just can't do it. We know we've had, we've been hit from the first of the year with things that we've dealt with in a year or so. And it's just, it's just gonna take us a little time. I hope people understands that. But I appreciate all the county workers, what they do, especially the road department right now. They're really being pushed to go so many different directions. Appreciate what y'all do.
Thanks, Ross. Larry?
Got one question. I guess I need to address Glenn on this. I noticed in the claims, and I just now noticed it, that we got about $20,000 routine medical at the jail, University of Kentucky, Baptist.
Yes.
What, what is it for?
Those are where inmates have been taken there, but we've also, that's not coming out of, we're getting reimbursed for that inmate. This law was just passed in the last two years. If you have a county inmate who goes to the hospital, is admitted or whatever, and his bill goes over $1,000, we can submit it to a catastrophic fund with corrections. They give us back all but that $1,000. So in the last month, we've got in like four claims. Two of them were over $7,000.
Yeah, $8,000.
That we get it from the Commonwealth of Kentucky, gives it back to us. And then the commissary account, which is allowed to pay for some medical, is writing us a check for the $1,000 that it's not paying for. But because the money comes to us, we have to pay the bill out, and that's what that expenditure is.
Well, if I'd.
We are getting money.
If I'd called it earlier, I would have asked you, but would, and that's county inmates also?
Yes, yes. That's just happened the last two years. Before that, in county, in the past, we've been on the hook for bills up to $10,000.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
Well, two of these is over $8,000.
Yes, yes. So this is a new law that's helping, helping us a lot.
Big help.
You know, of course, state inmates, but state inmates is covered by. You know, of course, they inmates and the state inmates have never gotten.
Sure.
Anyway, so.
I understand. Thank you. You asked me. I don't have anything, just glad to be here, Judge.
How's it here, buddy? Carl, you want to say something? I'm sorry I passed you all up. And any other department heads that want to?
I want to give you guys something to think about. You don't have to answer now. If you want to answer now, that's fine. But the April 3rd event, we declared a declaration of disaster because of all the road damages that we had and flooding of homes. And we exceeded our local threshold to be eligible for a presidential disaster. That's being processed. But what happened on the 14th of April was just about as devastating in a lot of areas. And with discussions with FEMA and the state and everybody else, they're putting together a package to see if it will fly or float, whatever you want to call it, in Washington, that the third event and the 14th event should be lumped into one event as a weather pattern. If they do that, I think we should be considering filing a declaration of disaster for the 14th. We didn't meet our threshold by, we were only about thirty-five percent of the way there. But if they lump them together, we already met our threshold on the third. That would be seventy-five percent of 120 grand from the damages on the 14th, which is all road stuff, that we'd be eligible for if we would get the presidential disaster. So to me, it's for, you know, a little bit of paperwork, we can try to get seventy-five percent of 120 grand and we have nothing to lose. We'll either get it or not get it. But, you know, I need your guys' opinion and input on how you want me to proceed. Because if we're going to do it, we should do it, you know, this week and file that other declaration for the road damages. We've talked to everyone else and no one else really had any. But Willie and I were out on the damage assessments with the FEMA team. And for the third damage, and it just happened to be, the 14th damage was there as well. So we showed them all of it and they're like, your numbers are too small. It's like, well, that's because there's two events here on top of each other. Some of this was fixed before this 14th event. And he said, well, you guys need to go after that as well.
What are the risks? I'm sorry. There's no risk in applying for both?
No, there's no risk at all to us. It's just us creating the declaration, judge signing the declaration and us getting it through the food chain in Frankfurt, which we're pretty good at it, and then having that on record. And the road department's already collected their numbers. They know they have about 120,000 dollars in loss, which doesn't meet our 300,000 dollar threshold. But with it grouped with the third event, with 500,000 dollars of damage, we're, we're well over. So I see it as, let's, let's give it a shot. All they can say is no. If we don't try, then the answer is no.
True.
So, but.
I agree with lumping them together if we have that opportunity, yeah.
If it doesn't jeopardize your funding for the third.
It doesn't. Not at all. That's what I've been told. And so I'll get a declaration prepared and we'll get someone to drop it off for you to sign it today, then if that's okay. And we'll go ahead and tell them we're in for the 14th as well.
Sooner the better. Thank you, Carl.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thanks. Hey, was there any other department heads? All right. At this time, comments from the audience. Doesn't look like there's any audience besides department heads. So I need a motion to pay the claims and prove the transfers.
Move.
Second.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bucken?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Tudor?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes. Next court date is Tuesday, May the 12th. It's in Brea. So if anybody can come, it'd be great. And now I need a motion to adjourn.
Move. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Tudor?
Yes.
Mr. Bucken?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes. Thanks, guys. Good meeting.